Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, July 13. As is the case for another month, we are meeting remotely via Zoom. You can pick up the Zoom link at pleasantville-ny.gov, not only for Village Board Meetings, but for the other boards and commissions that are meeting via Zoom. And we encourage you to call in or log in if you are so inclined. As always, the meeting is recorded. It will end up on PCTV76.org within a couple of days. And we will have a complete painful transcription of everything we said, including every if, and, but, or um, that will be posted as well. So as is the case for regular televised meetings, you can see the whole thing online. So I have a bunch of announcements to make, but the first item on our agenda was presentation by Jasmine Graham from Westchester Power about the Community Choice Aggregation Program, the Joint Utility, Electric Utility Purchasing Program that Sustainable Westchester got going and branded Westchester Power. Jasmine, if you can share your screen, that works. Otherwise, I have your presentation and you just tell me when to push forward. Which is better?
I understand it. There you go. Can you see it?
Welcome, Jasmine.
All right, thank you so much for having me. Let's just do this, minimize this. All right, so my name is Jasmine Graham. I am the Program Manager of the Westchester Power CCA, which is one of the many programs of Sustainable Westchester. So Sustainable Westchester is a nonprofit. We're based out of Mount Kisco. And essentially, we help municipalities be more environmentally sustainable in economically efficient ways. Everything you see in blue, all of these municipalities are members. Forty-five out of forty, forty-four out of forty-five municipalities in the county, plus the county itself.
We're not going to call out the one yellow one, but I'm working on them.
We expect them to join soon.
All right. They have all the good reasons to, I'm just saying. This is the moment.
Absolutely. And some of those good reasons are that we have all of these programs. So today, I'm going to talk about Westchester Power and a little bit about community solar. We also have the HeatSmart Program, which helps with energy efficiency, clean heating and cooling, including geothermal and air source heat pumps. We've also got the Clean Transportation Project, which helps people to get discounts on electric vehicles and also to secure charging infrastructure. And we've got our Zero Waste Program, and most notably, the Recycle Right app, which helps individuals properly recycle and reduce the costs of doing so while improving waste management. But today, I'm going to talk about the Westchester Power Program. And essentially, just a little overview for the folks who may not remember us. Our main goal here is to take charge of our energy future and to advance New York State climate goals. So we're able to set a criteria that energy companies must meet in order to supply our program. We educate and advocate for clean energy. And we really want to position the communities in Westchester to be resilient in the face of climate change. Right now, in the Westchester Power Program, everything you see in blue, those are our participating municipalities. There are 27 of them, 24 of which are in the Green Supply, Pleasantville included. And that makes up about 115,000 residents and small businesses. And the big reason why we do this is for the environmental impact. So program-wide, we have offset over 650,000 metric tons of CO2, which is equivalent to taking over 141,000 cars off the road for a year, or planting 10.8 million tree seedlings grown for 10 years. And here in Pleasantville, well, I guess not here, because I'm not there right now, but you all have offset 4,811 metric tons of CO2, which is equivalent to taking 1,039 cars off the road for a year, or planting almost 80,000 tree seedlings and having them grow for 10 years. So among the benefits of the Westchester Power Program, we are a vetted community program. So we're a nonprofit. We're not an ESCO, although we do work with ESCOs. Our main goal here is to expand access to renewable energy. There's hundreds of ESCO offers, but you don't have to sift through all those. You won't get surprised with any rate fluctuations. There's never any penalties or termination fees. And of course, you always receive notice of new pricing before we renew the contract. On the financial side, we set a not-to-exceed bid cap, which essentially is a price that the suppliers must come in under. We also have fixed rates, which protects against the volatility and spikes of the market. You know what you're going to pay every single month when you're with the utility that number fluctuates. And we have competitive prices. Our large customer base allows us to get the best market price, particularly for green energy. And really, the most important thing that we do is advocacy and education. So, well, in-office support is currently pretty much still virtual, but we are still available Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. Our phone number is 914-242-4725. We also have an email address that you could reach us 24/7. And every day, we're educating people on green energy, on how to read their electricity bills. We help people to get out of predatory ESCO contracts. And importantly, we will always take as much time as needed to answer questions. I think my personal best is an hour and four minutes. So whatever question you have, we will take the time to answer it. And we're excited, because now we have in-house Spanish-language customer service as well. But the reason why we do this, the reason why this program is so important is because we are mitigating climate change. We help municipalities to meet the New York State climate goals, which we know with the CLCPA, the Community Leadership, wait. Community Leadership, okay, now, Climate Leadership Community Protection Act. There we go. New York State has set really ambitious climate goals. And as I mentioned before, we've offset hundreds of thousands of metric tons of CO2. We are, we know now, more than ever, the importance of mitigating air pollution as we have a respiratory pandemic underway. And participation in this program, while in the Green Supply, positions municipalities for grants and clean energy community certification. And what might be most important is we now have a seat at the table in the next phase of energy developments. So we're regularly in contact with New York State, with NYSERDA, about how to meet our climate goals. On the financial side, as I mentioned before, we have a fixed rate. And so the Green Supply right now is 7.96 cents per kilowatt hour. That's 100% New York State hydropower. Then we have a basic supply, which is largely nonrenewable. It's marginally cheaper at 7.71 cents per kilowatt hour. Over the past about 12 months, we've seen the utility rate dropping, which you can see at the tail end of this graph. But since the life of the program, since 2016, when many municipalities joined, we have still seen savings. And importantly, when you look at our pricing compared to the utility, it is not an apples-to-apples comparison. Our price is reflecting the New York State hydropower, whereas the utility is largely nonrenewable. So if you actually go on the New York State Power to Choose website and you type in 24-month contract with no cancellation fee and 100% renewable, you'll find that the rates are significantly higher than the Westchester Power Program. 8.7 or 15 cents per kilowatt hour, almost double the CCA price. And so in this most recent contract, we have been behind the utility by about $230,000 because of the historic drop in the utility rate. So as we saw, oil prices have plummeted. Natural gas has been low. There's been reduced demand because of COVID, among other things. And so we've seen a significant drop in the utility rate. But when you look over the life of the program, we're still net positive. And there's been $255,000 in savings since the beginning of the program. And that is including any losses that we saw in this most recent contract. When you look at that on a per-account basis, right now, most of the accounts in Pleasantville are green residential accounts. And so they're behind the utility by about $7 a month right now. Over the life of the program, however, they're still net positive by about $1.50 a month. But importantly, getting renewable energy. Now, as you might remember, you were not green in the first contract. And so those standard accounts are currently behind by about $7.50, but are net positive $3.12 over the life of the program. And on the right-hand side, you'll see that there are about 2,200 accounts in Pleasantville. And about 99% of them are in the Green Supply, which is great. So overall, since the program began, Pleasantville has seen $255,000 saved, 56 million kilowatt hours served, and over 4,800 tons of carbon dioxide avoided. But importantly, Westchester Power is a foundation for further initiatives. So right now, you've probably heard about community solar, which allows people to sign up for a solar project somewhere in their locality. So you actually just have to be in ConEd, in the ConEd territory. And people get a guaranteed savings of up to 10% on the solar, of their bill, or up to 10% discount on the solar credits, which is actually applied to your whole bill. But, and we've opted in hundreds of people so far, but it is a little bit of, it's not the easiest process, because there's a two-bill scenario right now in which you receive this discount and then, or you receive a lower utility bill and then you pay back the credits at a discount. And so there's two bills. But beginning next year, there's actually going to be consolidated billing. And so what that means is you won't have to pay two bills. You don't need, you know, auto pay or checking account for it. The solar credits will just be applied to your bill as a dollar amount. So on your ConEd bill, you'll just see, you know, minus $50 in solar credits. So this is really exciting. We've been asking for consolidated billing for a while, which will make community solar a lot easier to join and more easily integrated into the CCA. And so beginning next year, in the next contract, we will actually be able to offer those credits on an opt-out basis, which will provide more economic benefits as well as local environmental benefits, which we're really excited about. And importantly, this expands access to low-income customers who cannot currently participate in the CCA. So we have a few other groundbreaking programs that are really coming to a head right now. The first is Residential Demand Response Program. So this allows people to reduce their usage during peak times and to get financially compensated for that. So right now, we've got a pilot going. And we hope to roll that out across the ConEd territory afterward. We are also looking at a direct supply. So right now, we get our New York State hydropower through renewable energy certificates, REX. But moving forward, we actually want the ability to build renewable generation assets in the northern part of the state and then use a transmission line to directly wheel that down to Westchester and so that the actual green electrons on our grid, or so that the electrons on our grid are green. Instead of doing kind of a cap-and-trade, these renewable energy certificates, we would love to have a direct supply of new renewables. And we're also piloting new models like Sunshine EV, which integrates community solar, battery storage, electric vehicle charging. And we're actually adding geothermal as well. So we do hope that this will be a replicable model across the county and state. So part of the reason why we're here today is because this is a renewal year. And so this is just a brief recap. And the program started in 2016 with 20 municipalities. As of 2019, we were up to 27. And today, we are positioning for a renewal in which we hope to increase our renewable energy impact. So just as before, there are several key pillars involved in the contract and the RFP process. We know that we want two supply rates, a green and a basic. We know that we want fixed rates. We know that we want to maintain our commitment to New York State REX. And then we also set a not-to-exceed price. So essentially, that is a price cap in which the energy suppliers must come in under in order to supply the program. And that's a criteria that we decide together. We also have a new bid element, which is this reverse auction. And so this actually, instead of a blind bidding process, it allows the suppliers to see their opposing bids, which drives the price downward. So we're really excited to use this, because we do believe that it will shave an extra, you know, maybe mill or two off of the rate. And there are a lot of steps that go into renewal, a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that we do. But some of the important key dates and milestones are, next month, we will sign the memorandum of understanding. So that sets forth the criteria for the bidding process. Most notably, that not-to-exceed price, which we will finalize at the end of the month with the help of the municipalities. And assuming that all of the criteria in the MOU are met by the suppliers, then that is the document that commits a municipality to participate. In early November, we'll go out for the RFP once all those MOUs are signed. And by the end of September, we'll know what the new rate is going to be and what type of New York State renewable energy we'll be using. And by early November, notification letters will be mailed. Just as before, residents have 30 days to opt out of the program before ever being enrolled. Everyone receives a letter with all of the terms. And people can still opt out of the program anytime afterward with no penalties or fees. But that letter will go out to everyone in early November. And then beginning in January, residents and small businesses will be enrolled on a rolling basis, depending on their meet-or-read date. And until then, we will continue our outreach. So we do have social media. We have Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. We also have a new YouTube channel, which is really exciting. We have, if you type in Sustainable Westchester Media, you'll find videos on the Westchester Power Program. We have a 10-minute overview. We also have frequently asked questions and how to read your utility bill. So I would definitely encourage people to check that out. And we're happy to hold virtual information sessions or community education sessions. And eventually, that will be in person again. But until then, we're happy to get on Zoom and talk with people about the Westchester Power Program. So that is the end of my presentation. I'll stop sharing so that we can all see each other. And I am happy to answer any questions if you have them.
So that was great. Thank you, Jasmine.
Thank you.
We were early adopters and you guys have taken this to a level of fit and finish that reflects the commitment Sustainable Westchester has had to this whole thing. A couple of questions. The first is, folks are now in a circumstance because of the sort of upside-down economy, where as you pointed out, the utility rates are lower than the CCA rates. But is it fair to say that among the benefits delivered by the CCA, first off, it was nearly impossible to imagine that what has happened would ever happen. But also, as you point out, in the life of the contract, we're still net positive. And people ought to realize that among the benefits the program delivers is flat, stable rates throughout the year, as opposed to the ConEd rate, which fluctuates quite substantially based on the season. Am I got that right?
Absolutely. When I first joined Westchester Power three years ago, I was blown away by this idea that people get their bill with a rate on it and they just pay whatever it's going to be. And that your rate changes every month and every day, actually. Like you and your neighbor can have your meters read five days apart and pay totally different rates. And that blew my mind. I was like, I would never pay for something if I don't know what I'm going to pay beforehand. But yeah, we definitely couldn't have predicted this. We want everyone to know that, you know, especially during this time, we know that unemployment is really high. If there's any reason why you feel like you need to opt out or go back with the utility, you know, we encourage you to make the best financial decision for yourself. But we also know that the rate is, you know, it's in the seller, you know. So it's, from every indication that we have is that it's going to go back up. You know, we speak with suppliers. We speak with energy pricing analysts. And we do know that there's a lot of reasons to believe that the rate will increase. And like you said, there's a lot of fluctuation. Typically, you know, January is a really high month. Typically, the summer is another time when it peaks. So at the very least, you know, you're paying the same amount every month. And when this new contract started, the pricing criteria, the not-to-exceed price that we used, was actually the previous 12-month utility average. So the 12-month ConEd average at that time was 8.26 cents. And they brought us a rate that was under eight cents. So, you know, we, we had no, you know, we didn't know that this was going to happen.
And did that make global economic collapse? Just, you know, a few things like that.
Yeah, just, you know, global pandemic.
The other thing I have gotten from some folks is the idea that programs like this weaken ConEdson. And I just want to be at pains to point out that ConEdson does not make any money on the supply. In fact, they are prescribed by law from making any money on the supply. They are happy to be out of the supply business, because they're no longer in the generation business. They're just buying power to fulfill it as required. So this is the kind of model that New York State actually imagined would happen all by itself when the energy markets were deregulated and the poles and wires folks were taken out of the generating world.
Right.
So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, absolutely. And if you ever look at your bill, you'll actually see that delivery is where the majority of the costs are. Delivery has traditionally been around 11 cents per kilowatt hour. And we've seen it go as high as 13.5 cents recently. So yeah, everything you said was definitely correct.
Too bad it can't be, you can't go pick it up and bring it home yourself. Then the other point to be made is that, as you have already pointed out in the numbers, this program has pushed the progress forward really fast in Westchester for the green demand. And the green demand is what drives investment in the private sector in green supplies. And it has done that at a rate similar to what you would otherwise have paid for a brown supply. Fair to say?
Yes. And when we, when this program started in 2016, we were actually just the pilot. We were a pilot program. We were approved by DPS, the Department of Public Service. And since then, they have opened up CCA across the state. And there are several other CCAs that have gotten off the ground. So the success of our model actually opened it up for others.
So then I have one more question and then see if anyone else has questions. Has this real-time bidding system been used effectively elsewhere?
Yes. So the bidding software that we're using is Transparent Edge. And they've held over 10,000 auctions on this among energy suppliers.
So is there cause for some hope that because the contract will get, the price will get settled in these fraught times, that the rate may actually be lower than the previous contract?
That is one of our hopes, but everything that
You promised, come on.
But, everything that we are seeing is that the rate is likely going to go up. So unfortunately, you know, unlike previous years, we won't be able to use the previous 12-month average, because we can almost guarantee that we won't get compliant bids. However, we are going to get a lot of indicative pricing from many suppliers this time, from our new partnership with Transparent. And, you know, you'll be updated. You'll be the first one to hear where we think those rates will be. But right now, we aren't sure.
Other folks have questions?
Yeah, I was just wondering when that demand reduction pilot is going to, is that, is that like over the summer? Or when does that turn into a product that people can sign up for?
Yeah, we, I'm not sure of the exact timing at the moment. That's a program that Michelle Del Fontaine is working on. The pilot is over this summer. And so I think that the hope would be that we would be able to roll out a larger version of the program after ironing out, you know, the details in fall or winter. But the most desirable time to be in a demand response program is the summer. So at the very least, I know that we'll have it off the ground before next summer.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Peter, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
So a couple of questions. First of all, the opt-out, is that just current customers? Or is that now, again, all ConEd customers will, we're recycling and it'll be all ConEd customers will have to be, will have to opt out? Or is it just current customers?
It'll be current customers and then anyone who is newly eligible. So newly eligible refers to people who have recently moved in or anyone who has left their personal ESCO contract and reverted back to the utility or someone who recently removed a block from the utility. But people who have already opted out won't have to opt out again.
Okay, yeah, because that was, that was probably the biggest controversy that we had back when we were trying to shove savings down people's throats. And now it sounds like the narrative is slightly different, unfortunately, but still slightly different. And that is, we are asking you to make a move to opt out of a contract, which is actually more expensive than what may be available to you elsewhere.
Well, I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, Jasmine. It's less than available to you right now, but nobody is going to guarantee that in the future the way the rate through the CCA will.
Right. In other words. Right, yeah. We, unfortunately, you know, we don't, we don't know what the future-facing rates will do. But we, you know, we, we want people to be as informed as possible. We also, on the website, we put, on our website, sustainablewestchester.org, we post the monthly average utility rate. And so people can, you know, take a look at that and make a decision for themselves. But, you know, we do try to steer away from, you know, looking at one month and opting out. You want to look at it more over the long term. But we do want people to make the decision that's right for them.
No, and I appreciate that. I'm only pointing out maybe more for the board than anybody else. I opted to go with you guys after, and I'm a big believer in what you're doing. I just know that there's a lot of resistance from people who feel, felt that, you know, you're forcing me to, you're forcing me into a program, which at the time was easy to justify, because we thought we were going to be saving them, you know, quite a bit of money, to now where it's quite a bit uncertain as to what it is. And I just think that that opt-out becomes a little bit more sensitive at this point and something that you need to consider.
Yeah, I think it's worth noting that the opt-out structure is the only way that CCA really works. Because as, as we were talking about before, the PSC and the Department of Public Service deregulated the market and nobody went out and chose their own ESCO. Well, not nobody, but only about 20% of people. And so the opt-out structure is definitely something that is criticized about CCA. It's probably the biggest criticism that we have in general. But this program exists, not just in New York State, but in several other states. And the opt-out structure is really what we have to go with. But it is easy to opt out. You know, I definitely want to reiterate that. You can go on our website and fill out a form. It's like your name, your address, your utility number. And then you just say that you want to opt out. You can call our office, 914-242-4725. And when people get this notification letter in the mail, it actually comes with a little postcard that's already, has all your info on it. And you can just sign it and put it right back in your mailbox. And that's another way to opt out. So we do try to make it as easy as possible for people. Another thing worth mentioning is when you do get those letters eventually, you'll see that there's the Westchester Power logo on it and there will always be the municipal seal. you'll see that there's the, um, Westchester Power logo on it and there will always be the municipal seal. Um, so we do try to make sure that everyone knows it's official mail. You know, we want people to read it. We want people to engage with the program. And we're happy, um, as I said before, to do any level of outreach to, to make sure that people can make the most informed decision for themselves.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, just, just to be, uh, clear, folks who signed, who, who did not opt out and remain in the program since its, its onset here in Pleasantville ended up modestly better off than the folks who opted out. No way to know what that looks like in the future, but uh, in addition to the fact that there were modest savings, all these other manifest benefits, uh, were delivered uh, to, uh, the community through these ecological benefits and reinforcement of the alternative energy world. So, um, speaking personally, I certainly did not opt out and I would strongly encourage folks uh, who did opt out to take a look again. So, um, westchesterpower.org is still the website, Jasmine?
Yep. Or you can go to sustainablewestchester.org and it's fancy and new and we've updated it. And it looks really good and
All right.
Yeah.
So you're encouraging us to start there?
I'd say so, yes.
All right. Well, uh, other questions at all? All right. Thank you, Jasmine. We'll, uh, uh, be talking to you again soon. Thank you for such a thorough and clear presentation. And, uh, for, uh, your, a clear advocacy of what has been a great program, in my opinion, uh, for Pleasantville and for Westchester, so.
Thank you so much for having me. Really appreciate it. And I look forward to when I can be in person with you all again.
All right, when is that?
Uh, that's even less of a guarantee than the Con Ed rate.
All right. Maybe we can cut a deal of some kind. All right. Thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Jasmine.
All right. Um, so, uh, let me circle back to some announcements. Um, the, the first is we discussed in work session, uh, our program to try to help restaurants. We have been closing Wheeler Avenue on Saturday night from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Uh, in the first block of Wheeler to try to create an outdoor dining area that would give restaurants more opportunity to have more tables in this socially-distanced world. Uh, I think as we discussed in our work session, uh, it was, uh, good in lots of ways. But, um, uh, there were a number of restaurants who didn't find it in, in their interest to participate. And, uh, our sense of it at the moment is that we should pause it. Uh, we will obviously continue to leave the barriers that are in place uh, in front of Soul Brewing and Dolphin South on Wheeler and in front of, uh, Villa Kitchen on Washington. Uh, but at least for the moment, we won't be closing Wheeler on Saturday nights. Uh, it, uh, as I mentioned, was successful in many ways, not, not crazy successful. And, and not everybody along the street felt that it was in their interest in part because, uh, it made it one notch harder for folks to pick up, take out. But, um, we are thinking every day about ways we can partner with our restaurants and our stores and our businesses in general to try to help everybody back on their feet in this really tragic time that we have confronted. So, uh, we're continuing to do that. Uh, lots of enthusiasm for the idea that Wheeler might have a future pedestrian life that would, uh, include some creature comforts. And so that's on the radar screen as well. But, uh, for the moment, um, please come down and patronize our stores and businesses and restaurants. Uh, but, uh, you'll be able to park on Wheeler on a Saturday night. Other thing I wanted to mention, we've mentioned in the past, um, with all of the changes going on in our community life, uh, we have a number of ways in which we get information out to you. Uh, and one of them is, uh, a periodic newsletter. We're at work right now on the next iteration of that. Uh, that gets, uh, put up on our website, but also can be emailed to you directly. So I'm going to share my screen, uh, and, um, show you our website at pleasantville-ny.gov. Uh, this is our homepage. And, uh, we post various news items and those news items are frequently blasted out as an email. And if you are not on our list, go to Citizen Action Center, second button down on the left, uh, News and Announcements, click into that, type in your email and then choose what you want. Clinton Street Programs are senior programs, recreation notices, if that's of interest to you. But this one for sure, click Village and Local News. If you want to get agendas for any of our boards and committees, uh, you can also click into that and they will be emailed to you automatically. But this is the one I really, 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 really wish everybody would sign up for. Um, because, uh, anytime we have something that, uh, is going to be of general interest to the community, we send it out that way. And we also send out our quarterly newsletter. Um, did I not complete the share? There we go. Sorry about that. Um, back to this, second button down on the right, News and Announcements. This is the screen you see. Choose Village and Local News. Anything else you're interested in choosing, send it off and we will be, uh, sending you emails, not a crazy series of them. You won't be getting them every day, but you won't miss stuff that you might be interested in having. I can't count the number of people have asked me, wow, I didn't know about that. Here's your way to find out. Pleasantville-ny.gov. Click second button down, News and Announcements, uh, and you're off to the races and we will be able to stay in touch with you. Pleasantville Posts, uh, is our newsletter, uh, the Winter 2020 edition. You can always click into that on our website. Uh, here it is. But you can also get, uh, an automatic email when there's a new edition and read about what's going on in the Village of Pleasantville. So, uh, a bunch of different ways that we're trying to reach out to you. Um, and we really, really, really hope that you will assist us by signing up. While you're at it, on that same page, um, you can also sign up for our Code Red Emergency Service. Uh, that is on the right-hand side, Code Red. Uh, that is a program, uh, that we subscribe to. And we will use it only in a circumstance when there is an emergency kind of a notification. You can sign up and choose the way in which you want to be reached. We had a problem way back in, in Superstorm Sandy where lots of people were out of power. Lots of people had moved to other people's homes, uh, but wanted to know what was going on with their home in their neighborhood and their community. We didn't have a way to get to them. Code Red is the way to do it. So there you have it. On the front page, News and Announcements for news, Code Red for, uh, emergency stuff. Couple of other things, uh, to report. Um, as we are hearing on a daily basis, uh, the coronavirus is spiraling in dangerous ways in lots of states. Uh, happily, it is not spiraling in dangerous ways at the moment in New York State. Governor Cuomo, he has a press conference most days and, and had one today. He pointed out the two biggest threats that, you know, we confront in New York. Uh, the first is that people fail to wear masks and fail to, uh, respect social distancing. And the second is the risk that, uh, the virus will be imported from all these other states that are having these outbreaks. So, um, there are now quite a few states on the quarantine list. Uh, they today instituted a more draconian system for folks who are arriving by airplane from these affected states to make sure they quarantine. Uh, but locally here in Pleasantville, New York, I just want to remind everybody that the governor's executive order, which has the force of law, requires folks to wear a face mask whenever they are in a public place and cannot maintain a six-foot separation from other folks. So what that means is you need to be having a mask with you whenever you are outside and wandering in the public realm. When you're distant from other people, you don't have to have the mask on. But when you're approaching a bunch of people, please put it on. Uh, we're getting complaints every day about people who are wandering around in public places without masks and really leaving it to everybody else to, to, uh, cast a, um, a wide path around them. It's not a pleasant thing to wear a mask in hot weather, but it isn't the worst thing in the world. And it's a whole lot better than the risk that we might lose this hard-won victory that we have made in New York State and start to slip backwards. Um, I think most of us are aware of this outbreak that was centered around the, the Chappaqua High School graduation a couple of weeks ago, which painfully, uh, made its way into Pleasantville. Happily, i- in not too many cases, but a number. Uh, in, in Chappaqua, I think in the end it turned into 27 or 28 cases. It makes crystal clear how easy it is for a bunch of people to end up, uh, passing this virus around. If that keeps happening, we're going to end up going backwards, not forwards. Wear a mask. A special shout out to young folks. Uh, we're having a lot of, a lot of commentary that, uh, younger folks, uh, high school kids, middle school kids are not paying attention to social distancing, not paying attention to masks. Uh, that needs to change. The governor has made clear that it's the local government's responsibility, uh, to enforce these guidelines. And, uh, if we see you without a mask, we're going to tell you to put one on. It's the right thing to do. It's the responsible thing to do. It's the way to look out not only for yourself and your family, uh, but for everybody else and their family. So, uh, please, 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 wear a mask. Have a mask with you at all times, uh, when you're out in a public setting. Um, a shout out to our Pleasantville Farm Market. Uh, been running every week with, uh, all kinds of new protocols to try to keep everybody socially distanced and safe, but also to keep, uh, people connected, uh, to healthful food. Uh, Pleasantville Farm Market has rolled out an online ordering system uh, so that many of the vendors at the farm market will take your online order. You can, uh, order stuff online and there are special lines at each booth to pick up the stuff that you've already paid for and you're in and out in no time. So, uh, go to the Pleasantville Farm Market website, uh, take a look at the new online ordering system. Uh, it is a great, 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 great way to get the things you might want, uh, to get them quickly and efficiently, to reduce crowding down at the farm market and to make all of those services available to more people. So, um, uh, please, please, uh, do that. Um, also wanted to point out that we're in the midst, as I think most everybody knows, of the, uh, uh, every 10-year census. Um, we get the response rates, uh, on an every couple of days basis. As of, uh, last week, um, among the 45 municipalities in Westchester County, Pleasantville was in 12th place, um, with a total response as of July 8 of 72.3%. Uh, that's actually a, a pretty decent number in comparison to the 72% we had 10 years ago. Uh, but it is, um, not good enough. And, uh, we really need to be in the top 10, maybe in the top five. Uh, so, uh, let me just read off the top five at the moment. Scarsdale, Ardley, Pelham Manor, Briar Cliff, Newcastle. It can't really be that, uh, uh, Briar Cliff and Newcastle in a number six position, Croton number seven, Hastings, uh, have an edge on Pleasantville. So, um, if you haven't filled out the census, go to the census website and fill it out online. It happens very, very quickly. If you haven't filled it out, uh, moving into August, someone's going to come and knock on your door. So the best way to avoid someone knocking on your door is to fill out the census and to get us as close to 100% as we possibly can. It makes an enormous, enormous difference in the share of federal funding that Westchester County gets based on population. If we have an undercount, we don't get the money we deserve. Um, as I have mentioned a few times, our March Village elections are postponed. Uh, have been postponed a couple of times. They're now going to take place on September 15. And, uh, it's our hope and expectation that our uncontested election will allow Paul Alvarez, who is watching right now, uh, to be sworn in as a trustee and us to, uh, send Steve Lord off, uh, without the opportunity to spend much time in the new chairs that we have at, uh, the Village Board, uh, meeting room. Uh, we had kind of mangy moth-eaten chairs and, uh, Steve was rightly vocal about it. They have been replaced and then a pandemic has kept him from enjoying them. So more on Steve.
I'll have to make a special visit. I'll make a special visit to sit in the chair.
Okay. Um, as of the moment, it appears that at some point in mid-August, uh, we will uh, likely go back to in-person meetings, but with, uh, capacity controls and social distance required. Um, unless the governor extends the open meetings law to allow us to continue, uh, to meet by Zoom. Um, then the last thing I wanted to mention, uh, two, two more things that we discussed in, uh, work session. Um, one was some further discussion about the Pleasantville Pool, which as you know, we made the painful decision not to open this year. Uh, but, uh, we're also going to kick into gear and start work right away, starting with our Parks and Rec Advisory Board to put together a committee of folks, uh, to help us puzzle out the question of uh, what to do about the pool, uh, what it might cost, what the community wants and how it might be funded. So, uh, more on that coming soon. And then lastly, uh, those of you who follow the news from Albany are aware that Governor Cuomo, a couple of weeks ago, uh, passed an executive order that requires every community that has a police force, uh, to convene a, uh, a community engagement program, uh, to look at the state of policing in our community, uh, to think of ways in which we might do it better and, uh, to come up with a report that we filed back to the state by April 1. So, um, we have posted on our work session agenda and you'll see more of this, uh, in the coming weeks, a very rough draft of what that might look like. Um, and, uh, if you pick it up off our work session agenda, uh, just be aware that it's, that was the first cut that I put out, uh, to my colleagues and both the police chief and, uh, the village administration and the rest of my colleagues on the board. And we'll have, uh, have thoughts, no doubt, that will, uh, morph that in ways it may end up looking quite a bit different from the way it looks right now. But it was a first effort, uh, to try to attach not only, uh, a set of, uh, ideas about who we needed to engage and what we might talk about, but also to attach a, a rough schedule, uh, to it that would allow us to engage the community, uh, but to deliver a result by sometime, uh, towards the end of February. So, uh, more on that, uh, to come. Anybody else have comments or announcements to make?
Eric?
Yes?
Um, just curious, on Bedford Road, there are new cutouts, I believe near the, near the bus stops where they took grass out and they put concrete in. Who did that? Do you know?
Where are you referring?
Bedford Road.
Where, Rodney?
Uh, let's see, right, right in front of the old, um, it's, it's a house now going up, uh, the old, um, wreck, wreck building. Where, where the wreck building used to be, it's now being renovated into a house.
Yes, at Great Oak, sort of sunny side in Great Oak.
In between, in between the sidewalk and the curb, there's grass. They took the grass out and they put really lousy, truthfully lousy concrete. And the same thing on the other side of the street. And then up the street, they did it again.
But is that because of the new crosswalk?
Yeah.
Is that because of the new crosswalk that was in?
Right. Any idea?
Does that align with the new crosswalk is what I'm asking?
Who, me?
Yes.
It's not, it's not in line with it, but it's, it's right near it.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll, I'll follow up with Jeff. That would be the, uh, Westchester County doing that work.
That's a different, I'm telling you, it's a different contractor than the guys that did the sidewalks. And, and by the way, they removed those, uh, ba-, uh, those, um, labels on top of the, you know, they, they did it. That's fine. And they did a nice job, but this concrete, they did a lousy job.
Okay.
Just saying.
I'll look into that.
There's like bumps and barriers and
I haven't seen that yet. I'll go look to.
You too.
All right. Any other, uh, announcements to make?
Hey, Peter, it's, it's Jonathan. Just real quick, first of all, that photo that was on the Pleasantville page, great photo. Made me, remind me of, uh, the fact that we missed the Pleasantville Music Festival this past weekend. Um, but, uh, the, the, just saying, uh, I don't know who took that photo, but it's a good one.
Yeah, I think you do know who took that photo.
Who could that possibly be?
No.
I don't know.
It was this really modest guy that we
Let me just stop you on that point. I, I can tell you that, uh, for the last 15 years, I have spent the end of the week before the music festival with my heart in my throat. Uh, and if we
Can you imagine?
were to have a music festival this Saturday, I, I probably would have expired.
Yeah, that would have been a tough one.
The horrifying weather that was, uh, uh, on Friday, so.
Well, it would have ended up in New Hampshire, so if
If there's any, I, I've been searching for a silver lining for this pandemic and thus far haven't found one. But that was, that was one little delivery that hopefully we used up our bad weather chits.
Yeah, that was our one year when we, yeah, I think.
Agreed, agreed. The, the only other observation I was going to say is, uh, it would be nice, I don't know if there's a capability of doing it, but printing a few copies of, maybe you do it already, the newsletter and putting them in Clinton Street and in the library.
We do that.
Okay, great.
Village Hall as well.
Perfect. So people know.
Right.
Yep.
Um, then I also, uh, a shout out to Shane McGaffey at PCTV, also, uh, on the call. Um, on the day of the music festival that wasn't, uh, PCTV, uh, through, uh, the great effort by Shane, uh, with the, with the Executive Director Fiegler beating him mercilessly, uh, was able to, uh, pull up Executive Director Figler beating him mercilessly, was able to pull up a whole series of best-of music festival clips, which ran pretty much all day on Saturday, starting with Jonathan Edwards from the very first year. So thank you for that, Shane. Will that continue to run here and there?
I am going to post it later this week, so it will be available online all 12 hours.
All right. So if you have 12 hours to kill, you can remember highlights from the last many years. Thank you for that, Shane. Yeoman service, it was a no-small venture. All right, anybody else with that? The resolutions, 131, Nicole is absent, so it's Steve. I'm going to go to the PDF. Oh, there we go. For some reason, as I don't know if you're all aware, the sidebar isn't working, but if you click the resolution, it will pop up.
Right. Sure, so 131, whereas sealed bids were advertised in the official Village newspaper and received on Tuesday, June 16, 2020, for the tree removal, trimming and stump grinding. And whereas bids were received as per the following and reviewed by the Superintendent of Recreation and Parks, the bidder from Almstead Tree Shove and Lawn Care, tree removal daily rate of $2,795, and emergency hourly rate of $360. Ramos Tree Service, $2,500 and an emergency rate of $400. Las Boto Landscaping, $2,400 and emergency of $500. And Alpine Tree Service, Inc., their bid was $1,800 and their emergency hourly rate and stump grinding rate was $255. Now therefore being resolved with the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, hereby awards the bid for the tree removal, trimming, and stump grinding contract to Alpine Tree Service through June 30, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
We've used them before, right?
Desirable rate.
No, we, the last contract was with Ramos, so Alpine is a newer company trying to get a foothold in the municipal market. Matt and Mario ran the references, came back positive, and we got a better rate, so.
Cool.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 132, Joe.
Hold on. Okay. Resolved, the Board of Trustees approves the request from the Superintendent of Public Works to surplus the following vehicles and equivalents. And I'm not going to read all of them, but a 1998 Mack truck, a 1993 Ford dump truck, and so on. There are, I believe, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 14, I think, vehicles and equipment.
All right, is there a second for Resolution 132 as further stated in the record?
Second.
Comments, questions?
I'm curious, A, why a 2008 Ford Mercury Sable with only 61,000 miles, which it's a lot, but it's not, you know, that much. And then I guess all the other things are in place, but that one just seemed like it's...
Well, it's 19 years old, and it's believed to have a value of only $1,000. That's the old senior station wagon, which after it got replaced for that purpose, I think I've got this right, am I right? Then it got used at DPW.
Yeah. I don't know, it just seems like it's not that much mileage, but I mean, listen, if the car is really beat up, it's really beat up, so you know, it's okay.
That's the old senior center wagon, right? Yeah, that's pretty beat up.
Right. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 133, David.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the meetings held on June 22, 2020 attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as I commented at the outset, this transcript is, it goes on forever and painfully captures every single stumble of speech that we come up with. So if you're having trouble sleeping, it's all there for you. Comments or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 134, Steve.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the hiring of Richard D'Isiochio, or D'Isio, oh, I'm sorry, I'm butchering that, D'Isiochio. Hopefully that's close enough. As a Parks seasonal laborer, job code 0425, at a rate of $13 per hour effective June 29, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we're filling in some of the folks we envisioned having this summer.
And I apologize, Richard, for butchering your last name.
Particularly in parks, a lot of backlog work since we're on a skeleton crew for the peak of the pandemic. So between watering, field maintenance, park maintenance, there's a lot of work that needs to be done that we need to catch up on, so.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 135, Joe.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the closing of Capital Project H8160.20820, refuse vehicle effective May 31, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
That's because we bought it, right?
That's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, David, 136.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year 2020 effective May 31, 2020, as listed below. $275 from account A99400 to account A1440.400. $39.19 from H5410.201/20490 Capital Sidewalk Project to H5410.20121490 Capital Sidewalk Project. These are just moving years, right?
Right.
79,000.
Right, from 2020 to 2021.
Yeah. $79,424.70 from H5197.201/20491 to H5197.201/21491, for a total of $83,344.60. Decrease in revenue and expenses from the general fund in a total amount of $49,832.39 from the Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Revenue, and that's just split out between 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 expense categories.
Is there a second for Resolution 136 as further stated in the record?
Second.
So just to remind folks, FYE 2020 is fiscal year ending 2020. Our fiscal year ends May 31, and the new fiscal year begins June 1, so we are now in FYE 2021, fiscal year ending 2021. And so you see these transactions moving stuff from one year to the next. And then just to remind folks that the Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Program is entirely funded by a federal grant. The village provides accounting services and office space, but the costs of the program are funded by a federal grant, not by the taxpayer. Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Steve, the next round of question amendments.
Sure. Resolved, the Board of...
Now we put Pleasantville Strong back in the new year.
Right. Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for the fiscal year ending 2021, as listed below. This is going to be the opposing entry of the one that David, I think, just read. This is increasing revenue and expense from the general fund effective June 1, 2020, the amount of $49,832.39 from the Pleasantville Strong Drug-Free Community Revenue account for, you know, broken up in the same totals as are reflected both here and in the prior resolution. And then also appropriating fund balance from general fund effective July 13, 2020, the amount of $42,194 from account number A5010.206 from Street Admin Auto to new vehicle, I'm sorry, for new vehicle for Superintendent of Public Works. And then $17,540 from A9950.901, transfer to Capital for Parkway Field Walkway. And then increasing revenue and expense effective July 13, 2020, in the amount of the $17,540 from H050.5031 Interfund Transfer from CM0037, this is awesome, to account H7110.201/21780 Parkway Field ADA Walkway. Wow.
Would you repeat that?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
I hope so.
Just to remind folks who likely haven't had cause to go down and see it, this Parkway Field ADA Walkway is a blacktop path that Jeff Econom laid out for us and organized the contractor to install that connects the parking lot on the Henkel side and the new bridge we have there with the ADA ramp on the new bleachers that were purchased last year with some village support, but mostly, and school district support, but mostly a grant from New York State. And then that walkway continues behind the bleachers and connects up to the plaza in front of the restroom building and the walkway out to Opera Street. So now for the first time, we have paved route from one side to the other, and also a means by which somebody who's mobility impaired will have an easier way of getting around, so. Other questions about these transactions?
Mr. Merrick, could I just add one thing?
You could.
I'd just like to say that, you know, and we're all very appreciative of that path, and I think that's a great addition. The project will be completed with the addition of the press box. Looks like it'll be sometime in October that that will be installed.
Okay, and that's a school district purchase?
Yes.
So the...
Part of this year's budget, yes.
Yeah, the bleachers have a flat platform at the top, which was the planned location for the press box, and so that's also good news. So tremendous amount of progress been made down at Parkway in the last few years, so a nice joint venture between Village working on its field and the school district assisting with bleachers and now the press box, so.
And the state, yeah.
Yeah. All right, comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, 138, Joe.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract of payment of claims dated July 13, 2020, for fiscal year 2020, covering check numbers 97648 to 97662, as listed below, the general fund, the water fund, the capital fund, the refuse fund, and the trust fund, for a total of $368,295.41.
Is there a second?
Second.
As is always the case, if you click into our agenda, which you can get to from our website, you can download the detail on all this stuff and see exactly what we are spending your tax money to buy, so.
And this is, and this is a closeout of the 2020 fiscal year, right?
Yes.
And...
The next one will be the...
You think this will close out the year, or do you think there's a...
This is the last one.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, the audit's coming up at the end of the month.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. And now the 2021 payment of claims.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated July 13, 2020, for fiscal year ending 2021, covering check numbers 97663 to 97838 from the general fund, $418,632.25. Water fund, $68,745.72. Refuge fund, $103,882.55. The trust fund, $700, a total of $586,960.52.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions on the payment of claims?
What's in the refuse fund? That's a bit higher than normal, right?
Yes.
Usually it's the tipping fee.
Yeah, and well, I know in the general fund, it's a big one this time around, healthcare and PERMA, our workers' comp coverage got paid out.
Yeah, so there it is, the New York State employees' health insurance, $156,488. So happily, we don't have that every time. Also, our payment, contractual payment for the library, $79,000. All right, further comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. That is the last of our regular agenda items. Is there any comment from the public on any subject? There being none, any new business? There being none, I'll stop the share. So our next regular meeting is two weeks from today, on Monday, July 27. Work session at 7, regular meeting at 8. And we will have more conversation on all the subjects that we began tonight. So thank you for your attention, thank you for your support, thank you all for wearing masks everywhere you go, keep everybody safe, keep New York's numbers where they are, make sure that we sustain the progress we have made. Thank you all and good night.
We need a motion to close the meeting.
Oh, good point. A motion, otherwise the meeting goes on theoretically forever.
Forever. I won't stop recording, you'll all be gone, but I'll still...
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. All right, we're off the hook. Thank you all, and thank you all for watching.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Bye.